We're going to be opening up the elections for a chair. I'm so glad it wasn't me. So at this point, I didn't know if we wanted to start with the nomination. Have you had anything to say?
Maybe, maybe can we do this before we just explain what the role is? I think that's a great idea. All right. So I'm just going to give some quick little descriptive. So that people understand that the chair of this whole committee is not is not an individual who has absolute power, right? You know, we're one committee. So we're always going to be considered as a group that has one. When we're thinking about who would put in the role, understand that this person doesn't have ultimate power over really anything. We always have to come to the table and discuss things as a group, right? Some phrases that I thought were great was first among equals, servant of the assembling. The search for a foreign chair describes the job of chairs, one that requires skill of handling the food process. And we need to be fairly but firmly to confront and welcome diversity into a clearly good departmental rules for board conduct. We need to keep in mind that our overarching mission for this whole committee is to have this continuous improvement in student achievement. And selecting a chair, and remember, we select, is just going to help guide that on the process, okay? And there's a bunch of more things to consider. But the chair has to keep the committee organized, right? Around one and progress in routine tasks by working with superintendent. He or she will have to attend meetings with town officials, they will represent the community there. How? A chair helps members develop skills and knowledge and you by mentoring new members. The chair's responsibility for making sure that information flows to the appropriate party between meetings. I guess what I think we should just take from this is just to understand that we are all equal on this committee. And that the chair has a lot of added extra responsibilities that take us more than has to a tremendous amount of time and energy and effort. And if it's not something that somebody can do, then I don't think, I don't think we should nominate anyone that really can't put the effort into the district. We need somebody to serve here that can put in this time. I know as a school committee member to prepare everybody, it's hours of work. And to be that as a chair, to want to serve in this is a lot of work. It's always a task that does involve to nominate themselves and be nominated that you've really considered how much time this is going to take to do. And I cannot give that term.
As chair, I don't believe that I can nominate anyone.
I'm going to go with the class this year.
I would give that. So I would not nominate myself. Sure, I'll nominate myself.
Is there a second?
There's a.
So now we are at the point of discussion. And. So Julie, you spoke and, you know, I, this has been really, I'm going to be honest with you. It's been very hard. It's not easy being chair. There's a lot of behind the scenes work, phone calls. I bought Holmes, who I hope feels better very soon, said to me today, how many hours are you spent on the phone today? And I said, let's just be grateful that I have unlimited coffee because that's a lot. And I didn't want this position when I first came on. I told Jim Spencer, no, it's not my wheelhouse. I don't want it. I don't want to do it. It's too much work. And then I worked with Susan and I saw up close and personal being her vice chair, how much work she did, didn't want it. And then I was kind of thrown into the position. And I'm grateful to my colleagues who have supported me and lifted me up and been wonderful. And that's the only way that I've been able to get this far. But I have been living towards the finish line. And we need someone who is enthusiastic and is excited and has the ability to do this job. It's a lot. So I kind of wrote up just a little bit of what I thought this person needed to be. I said that this person needs to want the position, they need to be able to find the time for what it is. At best, a part-time job, and at times, a full-time job. Needs to be well-versed in policy, law, procedure, have a clear understanding of protocol. Needs to be passionate about leading a new committee that wants to make positive change. Mike Taubman is all of those things. He ran unopposed, but still invested in science to promote his candidacy. He took the time to be part of the community forum. My own son questioned why an unopposed candidate would do anything at all. And I told him, look at Mike's motto on his sign, fighting for students. He does what he says and he says what he means. He's been an important voice at all of our meetings, questioning the status quo from budgets to evaluations to test scores. He's extremely committed to giving our students his best and our best. I know the community has mixed feelings about Mr. Taubman. You either love him or you hate him. He came onto this committee when it was remote and he was angry because he was passionate. He was fighting for our students and sometimes his emotions got the best of them. It was a different time and I watched a lot of people behave very badly on Facebook. And I still can't get over some of the offensive public comments and accusations that were directed at our committee. If I can forgive those things, knowing they came from a place of fear and anger, I would hope that others in the community would extend the same kindness in giving Mike a second chance. I feel that Mike would be a wonderful chair. I don't believe he's our, you know, he's the best that, you know, that we can come up with. I think he'd be very good at it. I feel very good about Mike being chair. And that comes from me, it comes from my heart, it comes from my character. I wouldn't be recommending Mike if I didn't really believe in him. And I do, I think he did a wonderful job. That's fine, Susan. Are there any other discussions, please? I appreciate your sharing, Julie, the part about the role of the chair. I am at the will of the committee. I am not the boss. I do not get to decide anything. When things go on an agenda, everybody has a voice. And so it's not like we're electing a king. So for those people that, you know, are nervous, I say, give Mike a chance. I'm so grateful that I was given a chance. Anybody could have said, she doesn't have a backbone, she's a worker bee, she's not a leader. I could have told you all those things. But I stepped up and I did what I didn't think I could do. And I think Mike's going to do a great job if he's voted in his chair. So is there any more discussion?
I'll add to it. I think that you come really prepared to meetings. I think you. A couple of moments since we've talked about the room. Those meetings that, you know, you were emotionally charged and, you know, things are said a certain way and body language is perceived a certain way. You know, as chair, we then, as a committee, if you were elected chair, we now have that responsibility too that you have to fulfill the role of the chair. And if you weren't, then we would have to have that discussion, you know. You weren't fulfilling the role, not that I think that's going to happen. But if that was to happen, then we have that responsibility too for the community members also. I do think you're well-versed. I think you research well. I think you write well. I think you have communication skills. I think there's great communication skill. When there is a difference in opinions, I think there is an emotional peace room to do do the same thing, or you're emotionally charged and that's a human thing, right? But we're going to help as a community, we will all work together, you know, to make sure that that we're being respectful of each other and that falls into our consideration. But I agree. I think you've done a great job as chair. You learn to really win sometimes.
Right, if there's no more discussion, then I suppose that we are at the vote. So we had the motion, the second. So I will say all in favor of Mike as chair. Big eye, an eye. Opposed? No stain, okay. So we have three eyes and no, and a no stain. So it passes. Mike, welcome as chair. Do you want to take over for the rest of this or you want to?
Sure.
Yeah?
From here, you're going to switch out.
Yeah. I made a copy of my notes for reference of being chair. Chee-chee feeling.
Okay, that's. All right. So before we continue, I do just want to say one quick thing. Although leave any long speeches for later on, but thank you, thank you, everybody. I did, I did write something just in my chance here. Basically, what I want to say is congratulations to the voters in Berlins and Boylston. As you did come up with huge numbers to vote for the first ever Berlins and Boylston Regional School District election. I don't know if everybody's completely aware, but I believe technically until Tuesday, it was still the transitional committee from 2019 when it was really regionalized. So this was the actual first election of the actual school committee, the real full school committee. So this is here now. And when it happened, it was in no small part due to Adam Mulver's diligent efforts as a district clerk to make sure everything's filed with the state to get that election to happen. So thank you, Adam, who's there. I'm sure the committee will love to hear feedback from the election, from the community about the election process going forward as it was the first time that our two towns had held this election in this format. So if anybody in the community wants to provide feedback to us, please let us know. I did speak to the Berlins Town Clerk today about just a small little issue from Election Day. Someone posted a campaign here inside the polling location, though that's illegal. So she's looking at that, so I'd like everybody to know about that. But now we've got some work to do, so let's get some work done. We need a vice chair and a clerk. So everybody, vice chair.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I think it's a good idea to have a chair and vice chair, one of the people coming in town.
Do you want to nominate anyone?
Yes, sure. I would be happy to.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of Megan as vice chair?
Aye.
Votes? Three, four, two, zero, so I'm an aye as well. Megan, all right. And clerk? The clerk, you know, the clerk, the current district clerk is Adam. Does not have to be a member of the community, I believe.
What is the role of the clerk? Number one, I'm sorry.
Make sure the election happens, number one. That's all.
We nominate Bob. We could nominate Bob.
All right. Interested?
Yeah.
I'll nominate Laurie Hart.
All in favor of Laurie? Any discussion of Laurie? In favor of Laurie?
Aye.
Aye as well, so that's just a. Laurie is the clerk. Appointment of assistant treasurer. I can inform Megan, reset?
I accept.
All right, in favor of Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. This time I'd like to open up the floor to all the comments, any public comments?
Adam, okay. Adam Mulver, 77 Cudere Road, Boylston, Mass. I asked for a recount, just kidding. So I have three things on the agenda I wanted to comment on. The first one is just to thank Laurie. So I wanted to first one to acknowledge that she stepped up when the prior chair quit and she was able to take the reins she didn't want. And she wanted to meet in less as time went on and even less as time kept going on. And I think we all owe her a gratification. You asked for a round of applause for that. Second thing I want to comment on today's agenda is the district improvement plan. So a lot of work has gone into this. I want to acknowledge Tara Costello, Superintend Zany, members of the Student Success Subcommittee, the Budget and Finance, Budget and Facility Subcommittee, for the work that's gone into this. I think we're going to see tonight a plan that really drives our district forward. It's aggressive. It's aggressive in terms of hiring, it's aggressive in terms of the budget. I look forward to helping get that passed, however, we need to within both towns. So we can do what we need to do for our students, especially in Boylston, where we are grossly underfunded compared to the funding that is at very numerous schools. The third thing I want to comment on is the agenda I'm around, appointing a new district councilor and attorney. So Laurie and I had the opportunity to work pretty closely with Michael Connell since they were appointed to assist us with the negotiation of Carol's contract. And there's a number of reasons why I advocated for and would strongly support the switch to Michael Connell. One of them is the fact that they're local, whereas our current attorney is based in East Long Meadow. So Kim Rosak will be the primary counsel for the district as a Boylston resident. They've been phenomenal in every experience we've had to part interact with and working on any number of issues related to the switch over from Jeff to Carol. And we'd encourage members of the committee to strongly consider approving that motion as well as the fact that there is probably going to be a slight increase in costs going with Mike as opposed to do there. But I think it's a worthwhile expansion for the district and will make things easier to sometimes work with. Thank you.
No other public comment? Has anyone received communications they'd like to share?
So Mr. Holmes did receive a communication from Mrs. Kyle Burns. And while Mr. Holmes is not here tonight to address it, he did want her to know that he is working on it.
The others? All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, some meeting minutes were not presented in time to approve at this meeting. So is there a motion to approve items A, C, D, E, and G of the consent agenda?
So I'll second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Just going to abstain.
All right. Well, passes. And a reports, the school committee chair's report. Laurie, maybe you can help me on this. Is there a report or just an introduction of the school committee's student?
Yeah, so I think the school, the school committee chair's report is basically, well, not basic, it's pretty big. We are welcoming our first student school committee member in a long time, Ms. Carolyn Kenzie. Carolyn is a senior at Tohono and she has volunteered to, or has been chosen to come to our committee meetings. And I just hope the students are up to and things of that nature. So welcome, Carolyn.
Item, the next item is an update from Carolyn Kenzie. Do you have an update?
I do not currently have an update, but I would like to say that I am also a member of the student advisory board for the Department of Education. So I do have quite a lot of experience being a student representative. I'm the communications coordinator. So I handle all communication between all the regions of student representatives across Massachusetts. So I'm looking forward to working more locally and representing the people I know and care about most is the people in our community. So I look forward to being your student representative.
Okay, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
Carolyn, can you explain to everybody how big that position is? Like how it's not something that everybody gets?
Yeah, so I'm, first, I ran for the Regional Student Advisory Council. So I ran for that and I represent all the schools in central Massachusetts. And then from there, I ran to be a delegate of the state Student Advisory Council. And then from there, I ran to be the communications coordinator. So I, I attended the first board meeting for the Department of Education. And my other member of leadership, Eric Planky, he is a voting member on the Board of Education. So we take all, like we do a lot of surveys and we try and figure out what are the most important issues in the state and bring them both to the board. And we also have our own subcommittees where we have a big presentation at the end of the year to try and get some policies changed. So this year, we're working on trying to include especially lower-income students in student representation across the state. We're trying to push financial literacy as a requirement for education across the state. And I think those are the two main groups we're working on. But yeah, so it's, I'm very excited to be a part of the group. And we directly report straight to the Board and Department of Education.
Listen, I didn't want to be in the way of helping the meeting schedule.
Yes, I did. Carolyn, did you get the meeting schedule?
Yes, I did.
Okay, one more time, thank you.
Moving on to the Subcommittee reports, Budget Facilities, and Safety, Megan?
Okay, so we actually met twice, I think, since our last school committee meeting. We met, we haven't been here all together since the beginning of October, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. So we have actually been super productive, high level. Few of the things we, last, at our last meeting with Nancy, she put together a list of all the requests or the first pass of requests from the principals. And we went through everything and pretty much it's Christmas, right? Everyone gets what they want, no. No, everything seemed necessary and, you know, without going into detail, we want to hire a couple of teachers, we want to hire a couple of paraprofessionals. We're looking right now at salaries for paraprofessionals and staff and making sure that we're benchmarking those and that we're where we're supposed to be. What else? That was the big thing. We talked about the budget schedule. Did I miss anything else? One thing that a parent had brought to my attention that we did talk about, and again, it was two meetings ago, was the cell phone reception at Tohono. So we talked about, and I think Paul brought this to us, probably the best thing would be if we could get a tower right outside of Tohono. And I think the way we left that was, we were going to follow up with the towns, specifically the town of Boylston, to see if that was something that was actually doable. So just for anyone listening that was concerned about that, that is something that's in the works and that's something that we have on our radar. And other than that, I think that was everything.
Close to meetings. Next meeting.
Yes.
Those are, we'll just get the women driving.
Yeah, I couldn't find them.
Yeah.
I'll figure it out.
Students. Student success and technology listed here on that one. Bob's also on that committee. We spent 98% of our time on the district improvement plan that we're going to talk about tonight. So we'll hear more about that there. Policy and school fee, Laurie?
Yeah, so we met on, yeah, October 7th. And we discussed, the MASC sends us newsletters on updates. The biggest updates that we had were the updated federal law that resulted in the acts of 2022, Chapter 17, being created, which is the addition of new protected classes and traits historically associated with race. So we went through, there's several policies here, student discipline, student dress, things along those lines. Most of the changes had to do with that. One of the biggest changes was that they took parent and made it parent slash guardian, which I thought was crazy for 2022 and that hasn't been done yet. So those are all first reads tonight. And what I did this time around, we gave the idea at our meeting, it's very hard to look at an old policy and a new policy and decide where the changes are and decide if you like the changes, if you want to keep them. So for everybody that takes a look at them, you'll note that anything that is in red is an addition. Anything that's in black was already there and then the purple is what they want to take out. So they were a little bit needy, yeah. And really working, we're looking ahead to working on some more school committee goals and other policies. Love them.
You.
Yes. I don't know, is this the right time for the update? I have the JIC, which is the student discipline. Yes, there was a fair amount of purple text we deleted that was circumstating around suspension. I was curious, it didn't appear to be stuck anywhere. But then there's also mention of principals, agreements to be signed about that. I just, I didn't know if there's any historical context to that. Like it seems to make it more gray of what constitutes a suspension or extension. You don't want to do this, I'll pull that up right now and then when we get the next part of the, yeah. We get to the, there's another part in the agenda too, what we're going to talk about then. Maybe those that help for me, I'll, I'll get to that then.
There's a policy up for vote tonight, the extension policy, JSCF.
Yes.
I want to, Jeff kindly reminded me, Carolyn, if you do need to leave for any reason, if you want to stay at the board meeting, you're going to come, come and go.
Okay, thank you.
Personal variations and superintendent evaluation. Is that Julie?
I think it's actually Laurie. But I don't have any, we don't have to.
All right, cool.
I think we need to revisit the committees, but we should do that at a later date. Just like.
Yes. Okay, next up, Director of Finance and Operations, Nancy, updates?
First, updates are interpretation, everyone's favorite topic lately. But be strong. So we're still having some issues with NRT, particularly in Berlin Elementary. Right, John? Finding drivers is very difficult. It's like this for us, it's like this for many districts, it's nationwide, as everyone's aware. So right now, we currently have two routes where we don't have drivers. We have Berlin Bus Elementary plus three, Tohono, Berlin Bus three, and Boylston plus five, which is a permanent substitute driver currently. But I do have some good news. We have a driver for Berlin Bus three that has his permit and is in training. So if all goes well, we should have a permanent driver for that bus at the start of the new year. And then to add on to that, for Berlin Bus five, we, the driver who was on leave should be coming back by the start of the new year. So by the start of the new year, we should have all of our permanent drivers in place as long as nobody else goes out on leave. So not come with. So we feel like we're heading in the right direction, which is great news. All of our other runs are running smoothly, so we just ask the community, thank you for your patience. We, I know it's been difficult. NRT and demonstration have been doing the best we can to make this as smooth as possible for everybody. So thank you. There also has been a lot of questions in regards to the bus app. I was told that last year, there was a bus app that they put out and people were trying it. They're having a lot of difficulty due to service. So that's still in works. And as soon as they have more information, they'll update me on that. So as soon as I hear anything, I'll make sure I update the committee. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was the facility assessment in Boylston. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was the Facility Assessment in Boylston. Um, that came back and forward, that was another good one.
Yeah, thank you.
We didn't have any bids still. Well, it ended.
Right.
So at that committee, we decided that we would go back out to bid beginning of the new year. Kind of, it's kind of a busy season for everybody, beginning of the new year. People are looking for new opportunities, so we thought that would be a good time to go out and do that. Um, so there is a special town meeting that's coming up in Boylston. And I asked if the warrant could be issued for this facility assessment. Spoke to the town administrator and she said she would put it before the Board. But is there discretion as to what is on the warrant? She said that normally, the Finance Committee has a policy that that they do not like to put free cash articles before the town at a special town meeting. They like to do it at the general town meeting in May. Um, especially since the warrant is so low, the real push is to put these articles before the town at the annual town meeting. So she's going to request it, but it might not be likely that it will go on.
So Nancy, I don't want to interrupt, but I do have a little bit of an update. I actually attended the Select Board Meeting last night. It was last night, right? Um, and I put that idea out there and was told that we should go to the FinCom meeting, which is next Monday at six thirty. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that meeting. I will be on an airplane on my way to Florida. For fun, to see family. Um, so, so um, I hope I'm, we'll, we'll have to chat offline. But they said probably would be best to send a representative from the schools, whether it be a school committee member or um, or somebody in central office. Um, but that would be the way to get, you know, this on the warrant, would be to present it in person.
Okay.
So. Yes. Sorry, I should have brought that up in my update.
The other thing that I wanted to, oh, sorry.
No, when is the warrant, what's the time? When is the special town meeting warrant?
I don't know when the meeting actually is, but I think the time for it to put on the warrant has passed. We had it submitted by Monday.
So I, that's why I submitted it at the Select Board Meeting. It's on there, so we just have to go to FinCom. They, they pretty much said it's on there, but like the day FinCom has to approve it.
Yeah.
So the special town meeting is going to be, it was supposed to be, I think, December sixth and they pushed it to the thirteenth, or was it the fifth and it was supposed to be the twelfth? But it's going to be the second week in December.
Okay.
Um, so it'll be one of those, I can't remember who was the twelfth or the thirteenth. But it was supposed to be that first week.
The other thing I also wanted to mention is I applied for a grant through uh, MYAP and for, for ten thousand dollars for the Boylston Facility Assessment. And we actually won that grant, so we do, we do have ten thousand dollars towards the assessment.
Thank you, Nancy. That's awesome. Thank you. So can I ask you a question? How, how many times would you put it out to bid before there's a move?
It's where we can uh, we can.
I mean, we can. There's no way to break them up.
Huh?
You can't break it up. Like, you would do to get it under, so you can just have somebody do it rather than put it out to bid.
Well, it goes by a dollar amount.
Right. So instead of thirty, you break it to ten and then you're under that threshold and then you didn't have to put it out to bid.
Yeah, you can't really, that's really.
You can't break it.
You can't really do that. Yeah, yeah. Because how would you break it?
I don't know.
Some of the, I don't know, she wanted to just do like the roof.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Do the assessment on the roof.
Right. I don't know, you would probably, I don't.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if we get, you know, we do bid on.
But isn't it a full assessment, so they can.
This is a whole building assessment.
Yeah. So we would have to then.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, is there a next? Is there a?
Right.
Phase two, if it would be bigger.
I don't think we'd find.
Okay, we're going to have thought about that.
Yeah. That's a good thought, that's something to think about. What are the main things that we would want to have looked at? We know the roof is.
Right, I agree. Thank you. Um, are we sure? Sorry, one more, are we sure it's going to be thirty-four thousand?
Um, no, we are not sure.
That's our ask.
Yeah, yeah. And we were, we discussed about actually taking the dollar amount off of it for the next bid.
Right.
Or upping, upping it a little bit.
Oh, we will need a dollar amount when we go in to ask FinCom.
Yes, yes.
So the amount I had said was thirty-four thousand.
Which is the ten thousand dollar grant and we decide to up it. You might want to up it by ten and then cover. You got to look at it.
All right.
Ten, you're lying.
Okay.
Yeah, so that.
Sorry, it's last, last minute last night, Nancy.
Thanks, man.
Like, so Dan just said, after that.
Yeah.
And maybe I'll let Dan talk. Laura, you go ahead.
So yesterday, I brought in the Rose Game to do an assessment on the roof itself with problems of leaks. For most part, they said the roof is fine, they asked them areas of questions, which they'll meet with me on Friday morning to go over the areas of questions and how did those.
So can I ask a quick question? So I was in the building like a week or two ago and there was a leak, there was like puddle. It was the day, all right, so was that patched or were they able to do something about that or?
Oh, well, they're saying it's consistent with here.
So they put a patch?
They put a patch, but it's just, you got the metal roof and it's just like.
Yeah, no.
The iron here is, we tried to patch that. It's very difficult to know, material metal roof. It sits very old and, you know, people are, I've been up to this game, must be taken care of. And it's past its time, but I think at the Bush game, you also gave this question that needs to get repaired. So he's going to show me the report.
Okay.
So he has to get those addressed.
All right, awesome. Thank you. So I guess if the roof is being addressed now, would that have been part of the facilities study then?
Well, the facilities study comes in all types of things. You can't just put that off, you have to do the whole thing.
But you are actively working to get the leaks fixed.
I'm actually working, I just, it's day one.
I know.
I've got updates up in the nation. What if it's still in here?
So moving forward, if there's a leak, the school should just notify you and you'll come and put it back? Yeah. Because it's supposed to downpour again tomorrow.
I know.
With smites. So that should be fun.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jeff, District Improvement Plan.
All right.
Hi.
Now, one plus target, I think, maybe it was in the zone and inspecting. So today, we had to look at the, the District Improvement Plan. I want to give you some history on this. It was when I came in twenty eighteen, January twenty eighteen. First thing we did was put in place a five-year district improvement plan. And uh, this is the end of time, we had, we made some significant progress on it. And so last year, we decided, when we looked at that, we get it every year presented at school. It had become very fragmented, sort of, mostly because of the pandemic. So the things we couldn't get done. And then also with my, the announcement of my retirement at the end of this year and with a new school committee, we thought it would be a good idea to take the five-year district improvement plan, take some of the things that were left over that we really thought were worthwhile, and then incorporate those into a three-year transitional district improvement plan that the new school committee could own. And that also includes income superintendent. Unfortunately, the, the income superintendent is already here, so um, you know, Cal was really, done a great job of taking the lead on this. And it's, and it's definitely worth the name. Um, so it's also the first district improvement that did happen on the last one that the school committee has had some, oh, had a lot of input. So, so if you see some doesn't make sense, they probably did. Now, just kidding, we love them, but um, and so uh, we asked them, they're our part, we asked them to take ownership and also, so um, and they, they certainly did. The, the other thing I want to talk about here before I turn it over is the, the biggest cost we always have in the district, aside from the new move or something literally like that, is personnel. Salary is always the biggest item on, on the budget. This plan is heavy in personnel. And then there really is a reason for this. And so you often hear there's a shortage of teachers. And there's a shortage of teachers, it's true. You have to ask yourself, why is that happening? And there's shortage of educators. Well, there's a couple of reasons. The minor reason is that a lot of old folks like myself decided to retire early and, you know, teachers in the classroom who were, were in, in a classroom during COVID decided it's, you know, they're not going to do the extra year or two. But the real reason is a shortage of teachers. Is because early on in the pandemic, the, the, mostly why, the, the, people believe, the assessment companies believe that the way to dig our way out of this, to get my students back, was to bring them, bring them, when they came back to school, to do, do some assessments, to see what they should do, and then build the gap. But that was when we thought we'd be out for two months, three months. That's changed. And they're thinking on how we're going to get our students back to where they should be nationally, has changed. The thought now is that we have to invest in personnel, especially in supporting people, to help our teachers, to help our, our students. And that's the real reason. We're not producing less teachers. We're producing just as many teachers as we produced before. Um, we've also seen a lot of movement in teachers. Like, you know, our friends before, what was going on there? We're seeing, uh, you know, like this, we're losing a lot of teachers. I can remind you that many of the teachers we hired, the vast majority, came from other, they came from someplace. So everybody, it's like, you know, it's like amusements cheers right now. So there is a shortage of teachers, because everybody's trying to add additional staff. Um, and they're all willing to make the investment. So we hope, we know this is heavy in personnel. And so we hope our towns, um, when we believe they will, will um, will accept that idea and we want to make the investment in more personnel um, and make, and in turn make investment in our students. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Carol, who, as I said, had um, led this whole um, transition plan. So Carol?
Thank you. Berlin-Boylston Regional School District, we're celebrating our fourth year as one united school district. Four years, that's relatively young. We've been around a long time, but four years all together, one district. We have plenty of potential to change in very positive ways, yet we still are experiencing some growing pains. It isn't easy to blend three separate schools, separate cultures, and two towns together into one vision for the future. However, that's what we plan to do and the purpose of this District Improvement Plan. By working with a single vision in mind, we create a stronger, more responsive, and more united school district. Collectively and constantly, we ask ourselves these essential questions. Who are we? What do we want for our future, for our children? Why is it important, this work that we're doing? Our District Improvement Plan outlines both the needs in all of our schools and at each of our levels from elementary to middle high school. We want to be able to give our students an educational experience that broadens their knowledge and prepares them for their future, including college and careers, and also including the trades. We want to be able to create engaging learning environments open to exploration, critical thinking, and problem solving. We want to ensure that our schools are physically, emotionally, and socially safe spaces to learn and grow as individuals and within this microcosm of the larger society. And finally, we want to welcome new families who have chosen to live in our two communities and carry on the roles and responsibilities of good citizenship and stewardship of our land as others who have lived here for generations and their families have done. Tonight, we're going to be looking at four objectives, ma- major objectives in this District Improvement Plan. The first is personnel. The second is teaching and learning, technology, and then finance and budget. As we go through each of the sections, I'll introduce that section by going further into the, the full objective of each of those areas. Tonight, I'm asking the school committee and the viewers and our audience to keep an open mind as you listen to our principals, directors, and myself identify our goals and action steps. I want to take mine to introduce the team here that will be presenting this evening. Chanel Fitzpatrick, Dan Raiella, Nancy Kniski, Cara Ford, Sally Stugels, John Marie Ales, Paul Mara, of course, over on the computer here helping me out, John Campbell. Each of these individuals is not just an administrator in our district, but they have invested their time and their hearts into looking at this plan with me, with Jeff, and going over it and carefully thinking about what they want to tell you tonight about why each one of these, these objectives and what's in them. That content, that important content is important to all of us. I hope you will consider, again, as I said before, keeping an open mind, recognizing that what we're going to talk about tonight or not, I want. There are needs in this district. And to be thinking about how we're going to be going forward in the next three years to make a difference for our future grandchildren. We're going to start now with our plan. I think all of you are going to have a chance to get it this weekend, hopefully. I'm going to start with our personal. And our personal objective is to provide adequate and appropriate staffing in each of our three schools for the purpose of ensuring student safety, providing quality of instruction, meeting social emotional needs, and to advance the opportunities for students to participate in innovative courses.
John, where are you? So I am here to speak about personnel and then impact on Berlin and Boylston. And many of the items that we have listed in this school, on the District Improvement Plan, are allocated to different variants that we feel that staff would be increased, could be decreased, and helpful. So the first area, we talk about kindergarten classrooms and adding age paraprofessionals to kindergarten classes. This is crucial for us at that early youth education level. We need to be able to be in an engaging learning environment. And Carol talked about that earlier. In order to do that, we have to have enough staffing, because those small children, five-year-olds, need more people to be able to manage them in those learning environments. Additionally, there are uh, classroom teachers that we have listed. This is a little bit different for both um, Berlin and for where we are in Boylston. In Boylston, we are asking for two classroom teachers. And I want to just speak to this for a moment, that one of the things that have, we've had happen in Boylston is that fluctuating class size. And our teachers move from one grade level to another. And what that does is it provides some inconsistencies for educators to become experts on the subject area in the curriculum. So one way that we can add rigor to what we do with students each day in the curriculum is to have the additional staff, so that we can provide three grade level classrooms per grade, three teachers per grade, and that adds to consistency. It adds us, it adds to that ability to have rigor in the curriculum. And teachers become experts at the grade level that they're teaching rather than having to flop back and forth, which is really difficult to do. Additionally, at VES and VMS, we have on here Adjustment Counselors. We also heard Carol speak to the social emotional aspect of what we do every single day in the elementary school. And so that additional person would be someone who could support those needs of our students. And as you can anticipate, that has increased significantly through COVID. We also have health teacher at VES and at BMS. And that provides necessary education to our students regarding those social-emotional needs, but also physical needs and just the overall health of our students, and educating them so that when they move on to Tohoto, they have all of those things a base for all the things they want to know. The last part is an additional general aide for VES. VES has seen an increase, a 12% increase in students over the last year. And in that comes more kids, more kids equals some more things to tackle. And so we have on here a general recess and lunch aide, because we think that it's very important to appropriately supervise all of the students in those environments, in the cafeteria and outside of recess. And that would be able to be taken care of by that additional points expedition. Are there any questions?
You have mentioned one paraprofessional at VES, one, it's the one point four, the one point four two. Is that, will that mean one new paraprofessional in each class?
So that particular line, that's a re-question, thank you. The particular line there is to support special education students. So we have special education students currently supported. We have 15 paraprofessionals at VES right now. And so that would be an additional paraprofessional.
So covered with IDPs and that goes right up?
Correct, yeah.
Carol, any questions? Thank you.
Okay, so as part of Tohoto, for the 1.7 goal, we would like to have additional teacher staff in the areas of mathematics, PNA, and science, which comes from the fact that this will allow for smaller classrooms for more sections and levels of core courses offered, and also more elective opportunities, especially with our desire to expand our staff offerings, and also for courses associated with personal planning.
And in reference to the goal 1.10 in regards to Tohoto? Thank you.
Sure. Yes, one, so 1.9, I'm sorry, yes, 1.9. Our plan is to expand the ELL, or the English Language Learner Programming. At Tohoto, currently, that is a shared goal, half humanities, half English Language Learners. And the English Language Learner population has been growing in the district. It has just about doubled down in the last five years. So, you know, it's a small, but indeed, it is growing. And that would give us additional capacity for English Language Learner Programming. In the district, it's about 27.
Sorry for jumping the gun on the last one. But in reference to 1.10, that's in regards to the full-time hire of an athletic director. Currently, our athletic director works part-time while also teaching three sections of math. The responsibilities of the athletic director role are expansive, ranging not only from organizing all aspects of sports teams and competitions, overseeing coaches, transportation, but also walking through last-minute changes, cancellations, and rescheduling. This requires immediate ability to communicate important information out quickly. The newly formed full-time athletic role would also include a shared role of being a director of student culture, which would potentially also have a monitoring role in the cafeteria, hallways, and overseeing an after-school program for our student athletes to help them with homework prior to games and practices. This also opens up the need for the new math position, which would increase our offerings in the areas of mathematics and finance.
Can I just expand on that?
Yes.
So, you know, we've looked into this, and one of the things that we've been thinking about, in addition to all of the stuff, that we want to expand, we want to be more inclusive in what we do. One of the things that's been sort of shallow for a while is the idea of unified sports. We've obviously seen this, it's a part of special, where people with disabilities and non-disability compete on the same teams. So Massachusetts has a check, obviously, but it's being done at the local level, at high schools. And so we want to become part of that. And, you know, one thing, I think Mr. Carl will be here next month to talk about that. And also talk about the possibility of some programs. I think one of the programs he was talking about has a unified public college. These are opportunities that everybody, particularly in the schools, most of the schools, I mean, we've watched actually half this program going on. And they have almost 100% participation in this school. So, you know, when we talk about being inclusive and getting everybody involved, many times, students with disabilities don't get those opportunities. And so we need to provide that stuff, it's important. Kids are about equity, we can't run any of that stuff. Not just in the classroom, but also, you know, athletics. And have a full-time athletic director. Well, how about the building management? We'll do all of that stuff. Or how about things like busing? Because that's not going away. And we had issues with busing in sports. And that, that is not something that Nancy should be handling, sports busing. That should be done at the school level. But also expand in that program. So we'll give, you know, a presentation on that next month. And I'm going to ask you to pick a vote on some things, and hopefully support us on it. But the bigger picture is this full-time athletic director. So just so you know, directionally, thank you.
Any question? In terms of the job description, is writing training part of it? That's something I've historically encountered, hasn't happened.
That's a really good question, and I think we would have to make some considerations on that, because I think there are probably a lot of students as well as staff probably interested in something of that nature.
Or are you going to, it wasn't maybe like a stipend, other than that, you're in a university?
All right, the next section calls for partnering and hiring with additional assistant principal. As you know, we probably have two administrators in charge, five hundred and thirty-two students, and approximately eight staff. The ability to add another assistant principal will allow us to have one for the middle school and one for the high school. And this would allow us to have the ability to expand on separate programs that we're interested in starting, initiating, or expanding, such as fortunate graduate PBIS advisory programs and SEL curriculum. And this would allow us to do that also at an educational level. It also would help us with expediting, you know, time takes to investigate the current issues and help us to reach promotions faster. And between that new AD, student culture director, and an additional assistant principal, that would also increase the monitoring of hallways, bathrooms, and the cafeteria to more effectively contribute to greater safety.
I'm hoping to speak twice, but if I could just ask you. We did a, just a first study on an additional assistant principal, that should be in the prior. And so a little bit of comments there on that. One of the super talents, you know, we spotted, was a middle school and high school principal. And, you know, they're very, very different needs for middle school students and high school students. And we haven't, in my opinion, well, in the community opinion, been able to address that specifically. And then there's two ways of doing it. We could have gone with two principals, one assistant principal. But we think the best way to do it, the assistant principal role, traditional one, is building management operations and actually working directly with it. So they need that expertise, you need a middle school or high school. And so that's what we're hoping to achieve. I mean, I've been here since I got here, that we're not addressing that. And I don't disagree with it. But, again, it requires an investment in personnel. So that's, I think that's another, that's another, that's another big piece here.
I'm going to actually back up a little bit. I realized that we missed 1.8, which is our need and our plan to add an additional special education teacher out to the Tohoto staff. The student population is in need of an additional special education teacher at this point to meet the significant social, emotional, developmental needs that we're seeing within Tohoto at this point. And then I will go ahead to the family success partnership, which is abbreviated as FSP. That's a couple of numbers ahead. The FSP is something that we actually have in place now. This is a wraparound service for families that we contract with after the Valley Collaborative Board. It is currently funded from June of this year. We have, I believe, a ten, they refer to them as slots for families. And they help connect families in need with services in the community. Sometimes, I think we can help, really, things happen quickly in families. And it can be difficult to access and secure the resources that might be needed. And so this is a service that connects with the family and wraps around and supports them with a variety of community resources. And there's our plan to continue that, so that we can continue those slots. Those ten families are currently receiving those services, and otherwise, they would be discontinued in June. The next item is the district float nurse. In order to adequately meet the health and safety needs of the children in our district, our plan is to continue the presence of a float nurse for two primary purposes. The first is for the stability of our nursing staff. Out of approximately, eight out of the last 12 months, we've actually been relying on the float nurse to serve a long-term substitute for the school nurse. Because we've had difficulty keeping some nurses in some of those slots. And frankly, the landscape of the health offices has changed significantly since COVID. The second primary purpose of adding the district float nurse as a permanent position is really to ensure that we can, that we have equitable access to all of the after-school programs, the sports, the field trips, et cetera. As our student community becomes more medically complex, a nurse on staff is required for them to be able to access and attend those types of events. I think I have the next sentence as well. Our plan is to add a second BCBA to the district. BCBA stands for board certified behavior analyst. We've had one BCBA in the district for some time. And up until about COVID, that was adequate. Coming out of COVID, the needs to support students, teachers, and families of children with unsafe challenging behavior has increased significantly. BCBAs provide a lot of training to, not only do they provide direct service to students, but they provide a lot of training to staff and families. And at this point, in order to support students appropriately and to remain compliant, we do need to add an additional BCBA at this point. Occupational therapist, OT for short. The district has a long history of having one OT in the district. And the needs for an additional OT has slowly increased over time. Coming out of COVID, that increased again a bit. We've been offsetting that with some contracted services through half of the Valley Collaborative. And we are at the point where we may need to add a second occupational therapist to our own staff, to continue to meet the needs of our students in the district. They work on a variety of skills with students, ranging from academics to self-regulation, just the people that we can see in the classroom, self-care work skills. I believe that those are my items.
The last one, page 11, 1.129, is a request for an additional full-time technology technician. Currently, we're covering four buildings with 30 people. This would allow us to basically have staff, technology staff person on site in each building, at least on an active basis. There are times when we still get pulled into having to, you know, work together on projects. But for the most part, it would cut down the need for users to wait for someone to arrive on site. And again, it happens very often where, you know, a problem is immediate when you're in the classroom, and you have to wait 20 minutes, 30 minutes, two hours for a tech to arrive, it disrupts the classroom. We're at the point now where, because we're one to one, we're talking about supporting 1,300 QD and upwards of 4,000 devices that we're supporting. So the need for that additional staff portion is definitely here and there.
Our second objective, teaching and learning. We guarantee that each child in our district pre-K through 12 is provided with equitable opportunity to access their education, regardless of race, culture, disabilities, gender, or socioeconomic level. We want to do this by ensuring that curriculum meets the needs of all learners, ensure that teaching staff is supported by providing them with professional development opportunities, resources, and training to improve and enhance instructional practices. Three, by building innovative programming that supports the needs of all of our learners. And four, providing our families with ongoing communication. Five, by reaching out to the community for additional resources that we need to provide. John?
I have the first one in this section. I apologize for the mask on. Day nine, I'm kind of like, I've heard the weight of move off of mask. 2.1, ensuring the curriculum needs of all learners. The first two here are similar, establish a writing curriculum committee to pilot and select our writing curriculum, and then to establish a social-emotional curriculum committee to look at those materials as well. They're two versions of the same goal. Over the past three years, we've made significant progress in establishing a guaranteed viable curriculum for our elementary school students. These two items represent a continuation of them, of course, you know. We've identified the quality of student writing as an area of need of attention. And we will be examining the writing curriculum tools, which align with our broader language arts curriculum. Our social-emotional curriculum is also due for review. We may update, purchase a new one, or somewhere in between.
And page 13, I want to just highlight the people of the areas that we're focused on in middle school. We're looking at the, in 2.1, 7, 8, budgeting, purchasing, purchasing a social-emotional curriculum for the middle school. I know that this was a topic of concern through COVID, and certainly the middle school desire to continue the work that we've been doing in the elementary school and have dedicated time to meet with students. Greg Micallo, who is a middle school guidance counselor, and that, who actually employs, the guidance department was restructured in that way. So the grade now services just the middle school. He and I have been meeting together, working together to select a social-emotional curriculum. We've been looking at some, I just sent in several kits from here in the school community, which we use at the elementary level. We're going to be meeting with the crisis team in December to also talk about the curriculum there. And we also want to try to work on creating a schedule for grades to get into the classrooms on a more frequent and consistent basis now that these are working. So it's a combination of the resource and the time that we would need for you grades to get into those classrooms. And have meaningful conversations, because we'll have a structured program to work with. In 2.1, in 2.1.10, Lisa Seguera brought this to my attention. She and I have talked about this for quite some time. The idea of bringing in environmental science as one of the chosen courses that are in our high school level. Higher education is increasing the number of programs available to students now. It's a very hot area for colleges and for careers majors, including sustainability, environmental engineering, natural resources, conservation, ecology, sustainable agriculture, and environmental studies are on the increase. If we want to be able to get our students familiar, knowledgeable about these possibilities for this course, going to educate them in college. We already have a number of Tohoto graduates that are going to go to, in local farms that they have purchased and are doing sustainable farming, and that particular field. So very excited, and the possibility of reading that course in the Tohoto. In 2.1.14, I want to focus from one on, because actually, we're always required by DESI to review our curriculum. We don't just purchase it and give it, we go and do pilots on the purchases, or the potential purchases. We usually spend a year on those pilots. One of the things that the teachers do during that time is look through the lens of considering if there are biases in any way. if there are biases in any way in the materials that we're looking at. They actually have charts that they fill out to ensure that we don't see that in the curriculum or the resources we're purchasing. So in addition to that, though, we want to broaden our students' awareness of other cultures, countries, languages, and races across the world by bringing in more read-alouts, novels, and making them grow more, become well-rounded individuals. So we just want to expand their knowledge base throughout the world of all type of these materials. I also want to bring in, and I keep getting razzed for this, well, I'll play that one. John, it's your turn.
Thank you.
But, go ahead.
So I am, want to speak to professional development opportunities. 2.2.1 focuses on literacy and math training, early literacy pages two and three through five, our new HMH program. This is crucial to what we do as educators. We teach and we learn. And so having something in place where we can continually learn new things and ways to teach our students is extremely important. 2.2.2 talks about tiered systems of support, which is something that we are working on in terms of our IST process and talking about the ways that we can meet student needs where they are and all the different varieties of ways that we can do that. Encourage teachers to use those in the classroom and then circle back to see if it was effective, circle back out to see if we can try something different, and circle back. So that process is really important, and so there are all sorts of tiers of that, and that is crucial for us to be able to work with teachers outside of the classroom time to be able to have those expressions.
Sure. And I will speak to 2.2.3 and 2.4, which also address professional development in the areas of supporting students in special education services as well as parent professional development. And both of those really, both of those areas, as John Laurie spoke about, really increase the expertise level of our staff working with all students, understanding, you know, in-depth knowledge in terms of disability, learning styles, instructional strategies, collaboration, being able to increase positive behaviors, and reducing behaviors that interfere with learning.
Goal 2.3 is to build innovative ideas that support the hands-to-learn, and I've got the first few here. 2.3.1 and 2.3.2, providing additional support for struggling learners and providing meaningful after-school activities. As we seek to enhance and expand the learning opportunities for our elementary students, we want to explore after-hours activities. We plan to continue to develop our summertime acceleration program. In addition, because we know that learning doesn't end at 3:05, we want to support efforts for children to expand on and further explore their world through after-school enrichment programs. PTOs in both elementary schools have been very supportive of these efforts in the past. We hope to harness that cooperation to make a greater impact for our students. 2.3.3 and 4, this is my favorite card of this whole meeting, establish the social-emotional curriculum and purchase a pilot program. You might look, you might notice some similarity there, 2.3.3 and 2.3.4 are great examples of how organizational systems can still lead you wanting more. These duplicate goals, 2.1 football and 2.13, 2.14, the earlier goals are much more clearly fleshed up, but these two are supposed to be deleted, so take out your big red tongs and handle it.
In 2.3.5, this is on page 16, developing a financial literacy workshop assembly for page five of the savings bank. This is going to show up again in the high school level. The savings bank is a partner of ours. They have a banking program already here at Tohonto. We work with them all the time. They come to our parent camps, they have banking programs in these schools. I'd want to share here, they have a meeting with the savings bank on Friday, we're playing chatting with each other with emails to sit down and start that financial literacy plan and that program. So we're ready to work on putting that in place, page five, with assemblies and workshops for the younger students. They just have some online game opportunity where you can create your own business, kind of like a line craft format, but also just kind of working with those children, explaining we're banking on basic levels to them and working with them to initiate a financial responsibility. And then going up to the high school, where we'll develop again in partnership with the savings bank coursework that will make mandatory for all students to take that course prior to graduation. So I said they're already in motion. The next one, this is the one that matters to me quite a bit. And I've been talking about this since I came here 15 years ago. This one involves 2.3.7, bringing world language to the elementary schools, doing it as a special so that it could go opposite past classes, and exposing our students to other languages, cultures, travel, and the broader world. Our children travel with their families. They know that there are other languages taking place. They hear that. They get people coming to our country. I struggle to understand why we don't offer some form of world language. It does not have to be so that the children are fluent, although there are programs out there in elementary schools where there are. We're very small and it's hard to, we would have to get somebody to teach every single year or have a teacher who speaks fluent Spanish or French or whatever we choose. Let's at least try to get some kind of teaching going here, some kind of instruction in this area, and then go for it. So there's endless possibilities from that, but I do want to consider strongly launching that program. Sally in the middle school.
So in regards to 2.3.11 and 2.3.12, it's in regards to the shadowing and internship experience for students. We're really hopeful over the next two years that we can really enrich a student's experience to learning, seeing, observing, and interacting the jobs that could take place postgraduate. We're hopeful that this will make them have more informed career choices and educational choices after they graduate from Tohonto.
On page 19, 2.3.17, as I've shared before, just through the school committee, we're on the early phases of developing a competency-based education plan built on a model of approach for the graduate. And that will impact teaching and learning in transformative ways from K through 12. This will include input from students, staff, parents, school committee, and other stakeholders in our community and our district, and help us define our vision for the future and for our students. This is about 2.4, coming together and having a single vision that we have for what we want, what's best for our students in this particular district. All right, let me jump back to page 18. I'm going to speak to 2.3.15.
Sure. I can speak on that.
That's awesome.
Yes. So this ship would provide equity when it comes to more varying types of after-school opportunities for our students. We understand that there's a lot of interest out there and we want to make sure that the interest needs are met. So whether it's engaging in academic activities prior to games and practices, they can still find like they're having balance in their life, anything to promote time management too for our students.
I just have a question on page 2.1.9. Is the recorder, record curriculum outlet for the HUNCO, I'm going to go with HUNCO. I'm worried about the environment behind the work. If those are, I don't know if that was.
Sure. What I can do is because we're so used to talking about it. Atlas Rubicon is just a repository for curriculums. We're required, we did the MEAS review, the MEAS wanted to see what's a viable curriculum for the young face. DESI expects us to have a viable curriculum that we can look at, that the teachers can go to, that they can go to, to look at. So it's just a repository. Teachers in Tohonto have been loading their courses into that.
3.18, restructure the lunch menu to expand meals for students with dietary restrictions, allergies, specific food preferences, and to create healthier options for the lunch. I am currently working with a food service director, Lauren Warren Staples, on this. And she is actually currently working on gluten-free menu and vegetarian menu selections. And she plans to send out a survey to all students during the school year to kind of get their opinion on what they would like to possibly offer for more variety. Sure. 2.4.1 talks about studying our preschool programs to look at locations and expansion of programming. And that is well underway. We've all begun studying our preschool programs, our enrollments, our numbers, our location is well underway. And we plan to keep school planning to be a priority for the winter and we can share larger update next month.
There's going to be, I guess, just attention to outside areas, to the sort of outside.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's such an important piece, to be able to set the other place structures.
On page 20, 2.5, 2.6, 2.5, we're looking at just testing our hands out into the community more, drawing in new families and getting them involved in some of our organizations and committees and some of the volunteer work, thinking about ways that we can take a phone call, send a letter to them, invite them to come to a meeting or an event, knowing who those members are in the community, not leaving them being isolated, do not feel welcome to come in. So I'm looking for a way to get those people involved, make them feel welcome to part of the community. Maybe it's to become a brochure to come and help, something, something. And I think working with PTOs in particular is a wonderful way to do that, keeping an eye on who knows in our community, when they come in and notice. 2.6 is around the growing number of corporations and businesses in our area. We haven't tapped into them yet. We haven't knocked on their door. We want to knock on their door with school committee members and say, we're coming. And what can you do for us since you're here? Can you put your business in our community? They have lots of funding, but if we don't ask, they're not going to say, here you go, here's $100,000, and do something. I think we have to get there, talk to them, supporting us financially, or even being part of our internships and shadowing programs and becoming one of our community members who already listen with his company, who employs a member of our students working in the summer and also writing up new school. So we're grateful for that, we want to see you have that, this capability, this preparation to come in. Our next area is technology. And our technology objective is to advance technology in our schools for the safety, functionality, and effectiveness of all systems, to continuously add, maintain, and replace tools and platforms to meet the ever-changing technological advancements in education and beyond, to ensure that all of our students have access to the necessary devices and connectivity to effectively perform tasks requiring technological support. John?
In 3.1, the goal is to add, maintain, replace tools and platforms in each of our schools so that online programming is effectively and efficiently for instructional practices, assessment, and student responses. 3.1.1 and 1.2 is the budgeting for purchasing and a subscription to typing.com for our elementary schools. Prior to COVID, we spent a lot of time trying to analyze why elementary school students did so poorly on the essay portion of the MCAT tests. Longtime viewers of this fabulous video are probably aware about especially their inability to do the conventions. It was perplexing to me how they could do so poorly because I've seen them write. During a meeting earlier this year, we were looking at actual samples of student MCAT test writing responses. And one teacher pointed out what should have probably been obvious to everybody, which is that elementary school students don't have a keyboarding experience to know how to make capital letters. It was like a dog. So we agreed to teach them how to effectively use the keyboard with more than one finger. That is our goal.
Sally.
Okay. The 3.1.3, this is for budgeting for the updated lab class platforms. These are platforms used in science classes on a regular basis, such as chemistry, physics, and AP biology. They are used on a regular basis. They simulate real-life science applications and they can store hard power against science course pathways. The current hardware is no longer supported and they couldn't, that is failing. Students interested in majoring in sciences or working in science field will be working with such platforms eventually, so this exposure is very good.
And in regards to items 3.15 and 3.16, we currently only have one 3D printer, which is considered insufficient for course use. Two additional printers would allow integration of the 3D printing device available for multiple technology and engineering courses in middle and high school levels. 3D printing provides a way to incorporate real-world technology into the classroom, which is vital as we're working towards ensuring our students have hard skills in the curriculum that can be applied outside of the classroom. Additionally, 3D printing enhances the understanding of the technology and engineering process through prototyping and development of workflows, which allows students to actively engage in real-world problem solving. And currently, courses that use 3D printers is eighth-grade technology, CAD, robotics, 3D design, and engineering in the future.
We're also looking for budgeting and purchasing a three-year subscription to Gizmos, which is a real-time lab platform that develops real-life study papers at different grade levels and helps students make the real-world connections. And then for items 3.111 and 3.112, a computer numerical control device would allow communication between computers and the tools we use in our graphic design and 3D courses. So right now, tools in our workshop and 3D classes would be able to communicate to one another, to the classroom computers.
I want to go back just a moment to 3.19. This is a course that doesn't often get a lot of attention in the faculty. The initial investment in this course was made through the Ford Foundation and a grant that was given to them over five years ago. The equipment for this program is, of course, is outdated. I spoke with Jeremiah Malon, he's a department chair. He has one segment of middle school music technology, two segments of high school music technology. These funds would allow him to upgrade all 18 workstations in his room, which would give the music department a maximum amount, possibly 54 students every year. This also is, it started in 2015, and since then, 88 seventh graders and 92 high school students have taken this course. 14 high schoolers took this course through COVID, which has found amazing. And of that group that took this particular course, nine Tohonto graduates thus far have gone on to study the field of audio production at college, soon to see.
Goal 3.2 is to ensure that all of our students are equipped with one device, they can do connectivity, go past one at home by creating an initial three-year technology replacement plan and a subsequent five-year replacement plan beginning at 5.6. So. So as you see, the items in 3.2, I mean, it's a long list of items, 3.2 through 3.21. But the bottom line is, is to replace the one-to-one devices, but also infrastructure, the networking infrastructure to support those devices. Currently, I'm not sure the current plan, I did also inventory that all of these, all of them are capital requests that we have made for this year. At least in 2014.
Hi, you're awesome.
Yep. So I also have 3.3. Goal 3.3, technology concern, creating open lines of communication between district staffs, students, and families. Most of 3.3 falls around, again, in our communication with families and type of any of our forms. These upgrades will hopefully make some of that manual collection easier as well as maybe get more efficient.
We're up to page 29. 3.4.0, increasing social media presence by maintaining school and district Twitter, Instagram accounts by returning responsible to school website maintenance to the building principals and district website maintenance to central office administrators. The team of administrators, and I already had a conversation about this, and I mentioned this at the school community meeting, we don't promote ourselves. And said that, there I was interviewed, the best line I heard was, if we don't tell our stories, someone else will tell our stories. We do great things here. You heard Carolyn talk about the ones that she's involved in. I didn't know that about her. I didn't know that. We need to get more involved in promoting these types of things. The team's already started thinking about how to make better these Twitter accounts, anything that gets out to work out, those things that are happening. The girls' soccer team is going to a semifinals, right? In the state. Let's get a picture of them. Let's get them out there that's happening. The item reached out, they are still going, bless their hearts, they're still plugging weddings, trying to get hometown news out there. How are we going to encourage them to remind them to take a picture, to become a model? And Cleveland, I'm always big into coming to the next challenge in the spring. He's, he's one person, you know, he tries to get all over the place. And if we can send that things, send Jan things, put them in the paper, put them, write the articles, I wouldn't want to do that. But when I retire, come back and write the article, do that, but I can't do that and do this. One, sir, one.
I need to Carol Eskey's, the athletic recognition too, the full-time, ten of them are that, we get these tweeting about the athletes. We get that exposure at the school.
Absolutely.
The music club is getting to go out with the girls in the different teams.
Yeah, that's awesome. I mean, that's much anything.
3.5 kind of piggybacks off of that. And there is a slight change in what's going to happen with the plan. Since we originally proposed this, our current website provider, Blackboard, was purchased by one of its competitors, Final Site. And so we're going to use the opportunity to convert over the summer to Final Site because A, it's going to give us a chance to basically test drive Final Site for free, so to speak. We're not going to have to pay a conversion charge or any setup charges. It will also afford us the opportunity to kind of do a more broad study in terms of looking at how we communicate effective forms of communication. Website world is going away, so it's looking at that broader, how are we going to communicate all those wonderful things that we do? People aren't better, people don't think, oh, I'm going to sit down now and look at Tohoto website and find out. Nobody does that. And so it's that, it'll afford us the opportunity to see if the Final Site will fit some of that, but how are we going to be doing it going forward and in what pocket are we going to use?
The final section is finance and budget, not objective, Nancy and Jed. The objective is to maintain long-term financial stability and sustainability for our district and to address long-range planning in a fiscal responsibly manner. And Nancy will then talk about, at the end of this, the financial impact of the district improvement activity.
So the first section, 4.1.1 and 2, go over the facility assessment plans, one for Berlin Memorial, that's already been completed, and then Boylston Elementary, which we will be putting back out for bid in the new year. And then HVAC for Boylston, we will be putting that into the capital plan for fiscal year 24. Under the middle school, high school, we are putting a facility assessment plan in the capital plan for fiscal year 24 of Tohoto. And 4.2.1, upgrade unnecessary components of the current security system through capital planning, that is also going in the fiscal year 24 capital plan. 4.2.1, replace the HVAC software and maintenance package going into the capital plan for fiscal year 24. 4.4, fiscal overproducing school choice annually for Boylston Elementary. So for next year and the year after, it will be reduced by 25,000 for each. And for the middle school, high school, it will be reduced by 25,000 for 24 and 25. And lastly, to add to the special education reserve fund at Tohoto for our rising cost of our audit replacements, to deposit 10,000 annually projected in our fiscal year 24 budget.
Do you have a question about the school choice?
Sure.
I know in the past, Ace had said that his budget at BES really depends upon the school choice. So I was curious if by reducing that, we're then looking to increase BES budget?
I wasn't here with them planning to develop, so I'm not sure.
I think you're referring to you just be using the general fund, correct?
I thought this, I took this to be reducing the allocation of.
I think one of the things that was happening was we were using, we were beginning to use was in Tokyo. So I know Mark and I previously talked about stabilizing that fund so that we're not doing that.
I guess, I guess, is that deficit that's one of in BES budget is actually asked, the things we're moving on?
So to my red election, and I'm sorry if I don't remember correctly, Ace is saying that he used school choice funds to, maybe like to fulfill this budget of what we did at the end. So I guess I know historically, the BES budget has not been as robust as it should be. So I guess my question is, by reducing that, then we're no longer going to have those funds coming in from the students? Is that going to come from somewhere else?
We still have the funds coming in from the students, but I think what Ace, he's not here, but I think what you're referring to is what typically has been happening to all schools. We take in, you know, we take in this amount, we spend this amount. And the idea is to reduce that and put the, charge the excess to the general fund. And I think Ace's point was that because the general fund has been underfunded by the town, his reliance on school choice was too high, so it would be draining off more than we took in. So in that, you know, school choice is usually an emergency fund, you know, we could use for, there's not many things it can't be used for. So if you get to the point where you, there's none there, you have no cushion. So I think that's what we're reaching for.
But that now is going to be still existing, so I mean, so say you're not going to, so I'm sorry, so is this saying we're not giving in school choice people enough money? Or we're just not using the school choice money?
The way I built the budget is I applied $25,000 less of an allocation from school choice in using more of the general budget funds. So nothing's being cut. It's just, it's coming from a different pocket.
Okay.
It's pretty much. It's not coming, just 25,000 is not coming from the school choice pocket, it's coming from the general fund pocket.
So. I guess my concern is BES seems underfunded. And so by reducing this, that.
It's not hurting BES.
Okay.
But it's just saving funds for later.
Just in the county.
That's just a fund management decision. We're looking to increase the general budget for BES. That's what this is. Yes. That's what this is. Don't worry about school choice funds, it's like fund management. It's just complicated, yeah.
I think it's also, it's not that we want to, the other problem we have is our schools are, our communities are growing, we don't have a lot of space, we have to stop relying on, we can't necessarily take one. But you made a good point, I understand.
Yeah, I just, if we're stopping that, which I understand, great, lots of building and stuff, I just want to make sure that the funders will come from somewhere.
So the next section is my favorite part. Too fancy. Is the financial impact that this whole plan has. So what I've done is I've broken this out by the four, one, two, four sections that we've gone over and by school. So you can see the first one is Berlin, second is Boylston, third is Tohoto. So the first on the top left is Berlin Memorial, and it's our personnel. So you can see I added all the personnel that was discussed. Same with the Boylston Elementary in Tohoto. I'm not going to go through them all because we already discussed them all, but if anyone has any questions, please jump out and let me know. I did add in benefits for the personnel because that's going to affect it as well. For the teaching and learning, everything we discussed is added in there, obviously with the dollar figures. Technology, the same. Finance, the school choice we just discussed. And then they're all totaled up a lot. So the bottom line, the total for Berlin, for the financial impact, there's 302,000. The total for Boylston is just about 1 million. And Tohoto is 1.2. And if anyone has any questions, let me know.
The total, the total budget is around 20 million, you're right?
Yep.
So this is barely 10%.
It's more than 5%. So, well, I built the 24 budget, so I have, you know, very rough numbers. I didn't do, prepare for me for a minute, I think I actually do have it. So I don't have the exact numbers because I did it for above-level service comparison, but we have other items that I added into it that aren't part of this plan.
Okay.
So I don't have it broken out just from this plan. I can give it to you with the other items added in, but.
So I'm seeing, maybe I'm misreading this, the headings didn't carry over, so I read them again. So we're adding like 2.4. I was going to say it's one with one, you're in the problem.
Yeah, so here's a good example. And for last year, the above-level service was 16,963. Just this plan itself, you're at 302,000. In Boylston last year, the above-level service request was 59,585. This is 1 million. Tohoto, the above-level service request was 102,188, and this is about 1.2. So that was an idea.
You also have to consider practicing, this is all above-level service stuff. This isn't all the above-level service stuff, it's the above-level service in the plan.
Right.
There's a level service that you kind of represent by 6%.
So.
Really talking about something as close to 20%.
So Nancy, are all of these, the numbers you've added in here, these are all for the 24, fiscal 24.
Just 24 only.
So all the stuff that's out, you didn't add it in? But I, it looked like most of the stuff, I know this is what we wanted, was to be in the next fiscal year.
Yep.
Because I, I do believe there are needs in the district, so yeah. So it would be a big ask for this year, over last year, over previous years. There's a big need at the time.
And yes. Yes, very big ask.
Yeah.
We got to just look at what's at the beginning, this is a need.
Well, last year for BES, I mean, that's a huge difference. You said we got 59,000 was what we budgeted for the above-level services, and this year we're breaking it. The budget's not finally up, it hasn't been approved, but we're looking at over $100,000. So it's just a huge swing. Same thing with Tohoto, 1.2 million last year, 125,000.
And this doesn't mean cover, we have a bunch of other.
Right. This is just what's in the plan, yeah. To Jed's point.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. No, this was great, this is.
And happy that we haven't asked, you know, we haven't pushed on this for many years.
Yep.
We've been very concerned, and so we have now, we're adding our, for things like technology, for example.
Huge.
That's the other, sorry, that's the other thing to keep in mind, some of these figures that are in here are in the capital budget. They won't all be in the general budget.
Right, like the age back 400,000, that's a huge.
Chromebooks and.
The Chromebook and all the technology. So there's huge ticket items that are going to go into the capital budget.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Now we appreciate the bold ask. I know there's some sticker shop value, but I think it's very important that we're honest about what we need, where we're going, and how to get there. We're surrounded by, you know, we have a lot of teachers that left who are surrounded by districts that are supporting the teachers and students, and we need to give our kids what they need. And I think, you know, we've been mindful of money so much in the past that we kind of held back a little bit. I like that we're putting this out there and just saying, here's what we need, and not pulling back, I think. So I appreciate this, this is really helpful, and I appreciate the explanations as to why we need these other pieces. They really tell the story. Thank you.
This is our team, this is the subcommittee that put this together, and the team on topic to speak to these tonight. Thank you to everybody who contributed to this. And I conclude our presentation. If you have any questions going forward, if you have a chance to look at this further, just contact us. Floyd or one of us, from the team, on me, Nancy, Jeff, and the portrait direction.
Next one question, will this go out to the community and then make it get feedback as early in the meeting?
It should, absolutely. We haven't talked about that next step. It's going to be part, it's going to be part of our budget conversations. I would, I did a meeting with the principals tomorrow, I would like them to have this conversation and share this after the staff. So that'll be the next step for this. And as far as the community, I'm sure as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Neil, please. Thanks, Carol. The easy part is over. I could actually execute it. I know that came along with the first draft, working on something new. Well, it's not here tonight, but we pull up working, so I'll just go through restructuring and formatting, adding as well, so thanks. One question, I know you mentioned a lot about athletics, high entry literacy that we've been talking about for years. I didn't catch a lot on the arts. Any topics related to art?
Yeah, I did actually, that's included in the after-school programming, it says including the arts and music, music. About the language specifically. But I know Jeremiah is already talking about putting a musical together.
Yeah, he has.
Yes. Yeah, they're already, they're already thinking. Yeah, they're already, they're already thinking about these things. So, you know, getting some things replaced, especially after that third bus. So we have three days of the bus coming in for after-school activities, and we'll give more students a stay after. I know Jeremiah asked about doing some work after school with instruments, practicing, and performances as well. Very excited we can use that.
Yeah, music techniques too.
Yeah. Okay, I guess moving on, your business now. I have a motion to approve the termination of our existing contract with Superior Law Offices.
So moved.
Any discussion? All right, these hold or?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, vote aye. Motion to approve the termination of our existing contract with Superior Law Offices passes. I have a motion to approve the appointment of Meyer for criminal attorney-at-law as district counsel.
So moved.
Megan?
I'll second.
Laurie, discussion?
I just wanted to note that we have Kim from Meyer over here.
Hello.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Rosa. And I, I'm just going to decide I don't know of this to you. Because my children love the school district. I had a daughter that graduated four years ago, she just graduated college this year. And my son came through the district, through the eighth grade, and went to Saint John's. I can't say enough good things about this school district, you know. I know my daughter was always like, I want to go there, I want to go there, it's small. But you know, in the end, I think she was very happy, she still got a lot of opportunities for her. AP classes were very good for her, she got the credits, she was really well in college. They do a wonderful job, the family speaks here. In Tohonto, they did an excellent job with my daughter. I know math is above the blue, but it's salary here, really the program operates. So it's really nice to be able to be here in the capacity, so thank you. You have questions? I thought we posted it as a 20, you'll be a ask, but I guess probably I should just tell you, I've been practicing law, doing employment law, and legal law. Since I started practicing in 1999, so it's been a long journey. I got a graduate course, I lost a college law school. And had one little interesting sort of diversion in my career after a few years of working in Boston for funding it exclusively. We were in permanent work, which is the work I do now, I said. I worked in a area of nativity. So I was a lawyer for now the tribe for five years. Very different, made local arts in. So yeah, so different, that very, very different capacity for five years. But other than that, pretty traditional track of working on management side, so representing employers always. Municipal clients, private sector clients, from nonprofits. This was me, I had worked for a prior client of mine. And while we didn't necessarily interact, I mean, I'm sure you knew I existed as well as I did you. And we never heard anything bad, so it will always be good. You know, the less you hear, the better, it means you're fine. So yeah, and I think, what I like to do with my clients is I really, I want to educate clients so that they know what they're doing, they know why they're doing it, and then they can. Now, I'm not saying that I don't want to be involved, I do. But the more that you know about how your role operates here, the better it is for you, the better you can be. And I'd like to see my clients do the best they can. The biggest compliment I get from any client is when they say, you know what, Kim? You did a great job because you taught us how to work. And I was being real there with one of those clients, I always feel good about it because I feel like they've learned something from me. And that's my responsibility is to help them understand how to do the best they can. And, you know, what their responsibility is, what their role plays, their place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Court's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Hello. Motion to approve the appointment of Meyer for criminal attorney-at-law as district counsel passes. About the motion to approve changes to policy JIC FD, bullying prevention.
So moved.
Megan?
I'll second.
Laurie, discussion?
I have a question about that. So superintendent developed prevention intervention plan to be reviewed annually, does that exist already? Sorry, yeah, so it says superintendent should develop a preventive intervention plan. And so it's supposed to be reviewed and updated annually, and I'm curious if that developed, that prevention intervention plan exists already.
Question, Jeff?
Yeah, we do, the city act on bullying prevention plan existed in school?
I guess it kind of like departs the policy then defer to that plan, which.
They do, I don't know if anybody's been using, we should really be on a regular basis, so. If that's something you'd like to see.
Yeah, I just.
It's hot about handbooks and things like that, so where we apply that?
Okay, so it's something I'm sure you.
All in favor?
Aye.
As well, motion to approve the changes to JIC FD bullying prevention policy passes. Item D has been struck from the agenda, we're not going to ignore that. Crown motion to accept the donation in the amount of $2,850 from the Colochi family, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, to be used for expenses or activities for class of 2027.
So moved.
Julie?
Seven.
Yes, discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $2,850 from the Colochi family to be used for expenses and activities for class of 2027 passes. Crown motion to accept the donation of extra ballance equipment from Ellie Lynn to the Tohonto Engineering Department to be used.
Seven.
Megan, second.
Seven.
Yes, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As well, motion to accept the donation of extra ballance equipment from Ellie Lynn to the Tohonto Engineering Department to be used, passes. Crown motion to approve the creation of chess club, game group, and game room and auto club at Tohonto Regional Middle High School.
So moved.
Laurie, Eric?
Second.
Julie, discussion?
Ben La Valley is here, and he wants to speak to the auto club.
All right.
Yeah, so good evening, my name is Ben La Valley, I'm a senior at Tohonto, I'm a boss resident. So I'm here to seek the committee's approval for funding for the automotive club here at Tohonto. There are three aspects that I think, that I think the Tohontos community could benefit from this club. Firstly, there's an immense academic component to the automotive world, including the science behind the way cars work and the functionality of them, to the science of how they interact with their environment, and how the environment can in turn interact with them. Secondly, I think there's a large social aspect to the automotive world, and that can be represented in debate form. These debates can help members of this respective club understand the benefits and downsides of vehicle characteristics to be better informed about topics within the larger park community. And then lastly, there's also an opportunity for a community of at least a dozen students to come together and discuss common interests from the automotive world. And I've been trying for a past, like, almost a year at this point, working with my co-president, we have been coordinated. But my co-president and I have been working trying to come up with a plan for this club and really make sure that we got everything ready. And I'm really hoping to seek it approved.
Awesome, thank you.
How often do you meet?
So our plans are, we like, probably weekly, our plan is to do it after school. Style meeting is opposed to an athletic meeting, that way we can have a reading to extend a little bit longer, have a little bit more discussion time, or if we are working on a project, we have more time to do that. I was hoping to do roughly two days in the board, so after school, we all would meet up in Mr. Covino with the advisors' room, and we would do whatever topics are set for that day until four o'clock.
Hopefully that's in my.
This is something you guys meet up with on?
Yes, so I'm a big current business, so I wanted to have a committee here at Tohonto, and I met a couple other friends of mine who were also super interested and, you know, kind of wanted the space to be able to talk about that, have kind of a formatted discussion, get a chance to work on cars and stuff. Mr. Covell's actually presented the idea of working with ACED and potentially getting liability waivers, so that way we could have an intake of community members' cars that we could work on. And it would only be simple stuff like an oil change, changing brake pads. But it'd be a really good opportunity for us to, you know, get that hands-on experience. Because I mean, I personally want to go and get a little field for a career, this is the kind of colleges I'm applying to this year, and I feel that hands-on experience is something that can be really fundamental and helpful for people who are in education.
And I think it's also great too, that we can be asked that, right, for students that work in this public center, so they're associated with, you know, kind of that industry, so like, there's something offered here in ACED. So it could be, yeah, very well thought out.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion to approve creation of chess club, game group, and auto club at Tohonto Regional Middle High School passes. Crown motion to add additional stipends to junior national honor society.
So moved.
I'll second.
Jessica? Laurie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As well, motion to add additional stipends to junior national honor society passes. Is that it?
This is donation to more additional, additional stipends, high school student council, the number, letter I.
Laurie?
Three I, on that gentleman.
Crown motion to add, except the donation, oh, sorry. Crown motion to add additional stipends to the high school student council.
Auto club. Yeah, no, we got the student council, right?
Student council, yes, we just did national honor.
We did that, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, student council, so moved.
Seven.
Right, now I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Discussion?
I'm sorry.
No, is there? All in favor?
Aye.
As well, passes. Jay, Crown motion to accept the donation in the amount of $11,296.25 from the Boylston Elementary School PTO purchase additional instructional audio systems through license.
So moved.
Second.
Jess, Megan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As well. Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $11,296.25 from the Boylston Elementary School PTO purchase the instructional audio systems through license, passes. The rest of the items here are first readers, does anyone have any questions on the first readers?
So Jessica, I believe you had a question on JIC student discipline, and I believe you were asking, you were asking the portion that was taken out.
Yeah, so there was, you know, the updated grace.
Yep.
But then there's a large chunk of text on here that was surrounding the circumstances regarding suspensions and expulsions. So I don't know.
So I think, and perhaps, I don't know if Tohonto or the Tohonton administration are keeping an eye on this. I believe they're taking that up because the way it reads is that if you get an expulsion, if you did these things, and the way that they're doing it now, from my understanding, is that there's a meeting of parents. The red card that was added in is that there's going to be a determination, there'll actually be kind of like a hearing rather than an automatic, boom, you're done. So that was my understanding. But that is a good question, because you start going through the list, you're like, why would they want to get rid of those things?
Yeah, just even though it was rather brave and.
Yeah. No, but that's, and I had to go through it a couple times to remember why.
Any other questions on any K through Q?
The only thing I want to make a note of is policy J of BB. Remember Mike, at our meeting, there was JFBB and JFBBI? There's two of them, one of them speaks, we have to adopt, we have to decide whether to adopt JFBB or JFBBI. One of them is for school choice, one of them is against, but we currently do JFBB, and that's why we put it in here.
Yeah, the policy effect is that we do do school choice, but it gets ordered on every year.
Correct, yeah.
The other one, the other option is we by default do not do school choice. So this is one of the.
This is one of the, I was about to make that.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about the sexual harassment policy, the ACR in one.
ACR?
ACR.
Yeah, so.
ACR is.
ACR is not on there, and it's because our stance, that's a good question, it is in the list though, you probably saw it in the policy list. We discussed that at our policy meeting, we were curious why we couldn't find it in our actual policy manual. It's because the R stands for regulations, Christie has a book of regulations, yeah, we were confused about that as well.
Okay.
But there's, is there, is that what you're asking, Paul?
There is, it's.
It's AC.
I believe it's AC, we did it last time.
We did.
We voted it on the last, last meeting, we voted on it.
It's a different one, it was a vote last meeting.
It might be ACAB or something like that.
It was worked on tentatively.
Oh, yeah, the attorney even weighed in on it.
Yeah, yeah. I, sorry, I missed that one. Is there a redone statement we even report to them? Like in terms of like two avenues to report? I just, I'm sorry, I have a question, sorry, like, so like, I guess there's a question, if someone is the offended party and they're the reporting, are there two avenues to report sexual harassment to avoid that situation? Which has historically happened. I'm not sure, do you?
I'm not sure, I can say. Yeah, you said it again, too, I didn't.
Yeah, so, so say a person is the person you report sexual harassment to. If that A person is the person who is the sexual harasser, is there a B person that is another separate avenue to report?
Oh, okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
All right, Crown motion to enter executive session, in words of negotiation with non-juiciant personnel, Superintendent Megan, in return to open session.
So moved.
Roll call votes. Megan?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
As well. We'll adjourn to the next session.